All right, welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM, Monday, December 6th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Public Health Modernization Funding Application Request. I think we were all kind of individually briefed on this. There was a set of slides and stuff, so this may be Tom Kuhn remotely.
Yes, I am here, Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager at Health Services. And Eric Moni is also going to be joining us.
Okay. Okay, welcome. Yeah, so our screens are stuck in a different mode, but we can hear you.
Great. I'm still waiting for Eric to join.
Okay.
Tom, you don't have any slides or anything to show, do you? Because you're showing up in a really weird way on our screens.
Hmm, I do have slides, actually.
I'm trying to get IT now.
Oh, okay. We're wiggling wires on this side. That's what's going on.
Yeah, there's a... There are two-person windows up on our screen, but like we can't see anyone in either one of them, and they're sort of...
It just kind of stopped at one point. Is that what happened? Yeah, so it was just not updating. She's trying to do different things. Okay, so we may be... Yeah, no rush.
Eric Moni has joined.
Okay. So at this time, we don't have the opportunity to share the slides that you want to share, but we do have a good audio connection. And as I mentioned, I think the three of us have sat through, you know, kind of introduction to this individually. So let's proceed without slides and see how if we can get there.
Okay, sounds great. Once again, I'm here, Eric, if you can introduce yourself. Hi, Commissioners, Eric Moni, Environmental Health Supervisor.
Hey, Eric.
Morning, or good afternoon.
It's morning in Hawaii, I think.
It's two hours right now, so it's 11:00 there, yeah.
Well, thanks for having us back again to chat with you about our request to apply for public health modernization funds for the fiscal year '22 to '23 biennium. As I had shared with you last week, you know, modernization efforts have been going on for quite some time. We started our work in modernization back in 2017. It just ensures everyone in Oregon can expect the basic public health protections that everyone deserves. And Hospital 5024, this past session, included $2.1 million for the Deschutes County and region for this biennium. And the new area that it's going into this biennium is environmental health. So that's an area that's a little different than what we've gone through in the past. There are four goals for modernization that must be met in order to receive the funding. Protecting communities from acute and communicable diseases is goal one. Goal two is strengthening communicable disease, environmental health, and emergency preparedness, just making sure those three areas that we have, the systems and staff in place, we need to be successful. Protect communities from environmental health threats. Those are the things that we're dealing with in recent years, such as drought, wildfires, smoke, and just heat events like we had this past June. Just being able to look at what's going on and try to figure out ways that we can be better prepared as a community. And then goal four is full implementation of modernization, which we are really doing a great job of working towards that. And they would like all health departments to be fully implemented by 2025. There are some also, besides the goals, there are foundational capabilities that must be met. Foundational capabilities are the infrastructure requirements needed to have a comprehensive and high-functioning public health department. Foundational capability one is leadership and organizational capabilities. That's just ensuring that we're a high-performing department, and we have the tools and training that staff needs to be successful. Number two is health equity and cultural responsiveness is to make sure that we're making our services available to all members of the community, both urban and rural, and ensuring that we're delivering these services in a culturally appropriate way. Assessment and epidemiology, this is some work we've been doing for some time with modernization. That's where we're going to be able to get data, analyze it, and show where we have disparities or gaps in services. And obviously during COVID, the work our epidemiologists did through this funding was, you know, very essential for us to be, to see what was going on with COVID. Community partnership development is number five, or excuse me, number four. That's making sure we have the relationships in place with all businesses and organizations to make sure that we can quickly and efficiently respond when needed. And then finally, communications, just being able to communicate effectively to the community during both times of crisis or to be preventive. So that's what we need to meet with the work we are proposing. Here is the goals and the foundational capabilities. We also have some deliverables. We have to create a regional all-hazard preparedness plan, and this would be something that it would be very emergency preparedness-focused, but making sure our region has what it needs in place and also kind of a guideline to follow at times of emergency. We need to have a regional environmental hazards adaptation plan. This is, as I was mentioning before, wildfires, smoke, heat, drought, being able to analyze what's going on in recent years and what we can do to better respond and prepare ourselves. We need to have a regional health equity assessment and plan, and actually, we already have this complete. So now what we would do, this biennium with modernization is implement the action items that are in this plan. So it's, we've got the plan done, but now we're going to take it one step further. And we must demonstrate, as I said, all of our capabilities and all our goals are being met from our organization funding. Okay, yeah, without the slides, it's hopefully not too much narrative here, but... So basically, what we're proposing, and my slide has a nice little table, is, as I shared with you...
So Tom, just a few thoughts, feedback. So, yeah, we don't have slides here, but you know, kind of that epidemiologist and the study and the information flow of what we find, you know, it's always good to know the facts. The population risks, the population, you know, the choices being made relative to the outcomes that we're seeing. So, you know, that's, I can really support that. One of the things I would just ask, you know, kind of going into this upfront is, I guess, you know, let's not set up this scenario where we've determined that something, if you, if this behavior or this choice is bad, and then it ends up being a feedback loop to the state legislature, so then there's legislation saying that you're not allowed to do something because we've determined it's bad for you. So just a half a step away from that, for good information for all the citizens, is something I could support. So I'm just saying, sometimes these cycles end up just adding more and more layers to the system. And, yeah, so good facts is what I'd be advocating for there. And then also, just the mitigation hazard plan, we talked about this, this fits into, you know, the emergency manager position at the sheriff's office. This ends up being a paragraph or multiple paragraphs in the big picture of, you know, what are the possible emergency situations that we know of, the history of emergency situations, and then being able to look into it from a public health point of view, you know, what could really evolve into a population health emergency or, you know, the different scenarios that are there. So just pointing out that it's part of the biggest kind of emergency plan that we would have, which is, you know, multiple chapters in a binder that gets published every few years, but it gets updated regularly also.
So, Tom, I know this isn't really your issue today with modernization, but what about the fact that Oregon and Washington State have the fewest hospital beds per the population in the entire country? We have fewer beds than the other 48 states, and I'm wondering, who is going to be addressing that rather serious issue that, you know, I believe maybe like North Dakota has almost five beds per 10,000, and we have like less than two at the bottom end of the scale? So is that going to come up with our state at any point in time? Have you, have you heard any rumblings about that problem that we have?
I myself do not have not heard anything related to that in particular. I don't know if my other colleagues have heard anything more about that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think, I think you're raising a point that certainly should be looked at more carefully. I don't think it's within the framework of a public health modernization grant that we would be able to address that, if at all. But it's one that I imagine through the care coordination organizations and OHA negotiations could be looked at.
Well, so bringing that topic up, that would be interesting if, you know, if we were able to just figure out where that question could be discussed, as in, you know, if it's not in a, you know, public health branch, would it be, you know, just a rule of thumb relative to health department having the right amount of resources? Because I understand that, you know, it's nonprofits, it's private medical services, there's a big picture around that. But it kind of makes sense that public health, you know, there's a, you know, per-population healthcare system capacity that's relative to other places. So I'm just saying, let's document that kind of a parking lot question. That's a good one to think about.
Well, I just think it's something that, we can't ignore it. And truly, when we were worried about our COVID beds and there weren't enough beds, well, when you realize that we are at the very bottom end of the barrel as far as how many beds we have, maybe something needs to be done. Because I remember in July of 2019, remember, Tom, you had a meeting with me, there were no beds in Oregon with the exception of legacy Emmanuel in July of 2019, and this was before COVID because of all the emergencies and everything. And I believe you had told me at that moment in time that even the Idaho beds were full. People were doing a lot of, you know, things that they do in the summer, and the hospitals were full. So I'm, you know, I'm thinking like, okay, don't we add more beds? But I don't really believe we did.
I think, yeah, I think Commissioners, one avenue for your consideration is through the powerful AOC channel, where these discussions could be brought forth through the state and OHA for further unpack.
Great, thank you. Good discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely will have a placeholder for that for consideration in the future. So continuing on, we are applying for three different pots of funding. There's 5101 funds, which are local funds. That's Deschutes County only work. There's 5102, which are regional funds. That's working with Crook and Jefferson Counties with Deschutes being the fiscal agent. And then there's 5103, which is workforce dollars, which are one-time funding for 18 months. And that's just to help with us, basically, to get through any areas where we need some support due to COVID ultimately. So our total requested amount that we're going to ask for is $2.1 million. I think in the documentation for the agenda request, you should have some of that information in there as well as the positions listed to give you more of a visual picture. And as I had shared with you a couple weeks ago, and Eric Moni also, we have four positions we're going to ask for for the local 5101 funding. Two, one of the positions is something that we've already had, a quality improvement analyst. And that position is one that really helps us with a lot of those foundational capabilities and infrastructure type items, like getting a perfect audit or being accredited health department. That position's very involved with that sort of type of work. We also are going to devote .2 FTE, our existing emergency preparedness coordinator, so that they can help out with that all-hazards plan. So it'd just be a portion of their FTE. And then we are also proposing two new positions. I'll let Eric cover the next one. It's a vulnerable populations outbreak response and prevention position. If you want to talk a little bit more about that, Eric?
Oh, we see you now. Our video just came up.
Oh, great. So there are at least two areas where our county really needs to bolster our capacity in environmental health to align with Oregon's public health modernization goals. One is improving our ability to protect susceptible populations in long-term care facilities. The other is our ability to respond to complaints that we get from the public, reports of environmental hazards. This position will really help with both of those needs. Outbreak prevention trainings is something that we don't currently do in long-term care facilities with regard to gastrointestinal, like norovirus type of outbreaks, which have been rampant in Oregon in long-term care facilities, homeless shelters, warming kitchens. We did a four-year study in Oregon before the pandemic, and there, in a four-year period before, in 2010 to 2014, there were 577 gastrointestinal outbreaks, most of them noro. 577 outbreaks in Oregon. Over 80% of those were in these vulnerable populations that aren't really getting the trainings. And, and public health in Oregon doesn't really have the capacity to properly investigate the outbreaks, to figure out how to stop them, where they came from. We also would like to offer at least annual assessments of these kitchens and, and long-term care facilities. Right now, there aren't really any trainings. There are scheduled inspections of nursing homes, for example, that might happen every two or three years from the state. We think we need to have a local presence in doing that. On the other side, there are environmental hazards such as mold complaints that we receive, reports of lead poisonings, hey, my neighbor's been burning garbage for three days, swimmer's itch and blue-green algae blooms up in High Lakes. If folks call us and they want an evaluation of radon or asbestos, or mold, or air quality in their home, we unfortunately, right now, kind of farm those out to other government agencies and really never figure out if we've solved the problem for folks or not. So, so this position would really help in those two arenas. Thank you, Eric. And that would be, also, that position would be an environmental health specialist. So that'd fit in perfectly in Eric's shot. The, the other new proposed modernization position for Deschutes County also is a clinical information system administrator. That's a position where someone can go through our databases and existing health record systems and really start looking at that data, mining that data, looking for trends in what we have. And they also could do things like help environmental health with their database, which is very complex, and help us to get that information about work we're doing in environmental health. So there's many things this position can do, and we don't really have someone like this in public health at this time. So that would be a really helpful position.
Question about that.
Oh, go ahead.
So are other people going to start to eye that position or the capabilities of that person and say, oh, come look at my data, too? Could you see that happening in the health department pretty quick?
Yeah, I think there's going to be many different areas where people are going to want this expertise and help with it, because it's just time-consuming. And to have someone that's really good at that type of work to do it will really help, you know, the regular staff who maybe are not as skilled in that particular area.
If I, if I may add, Tom and Commissioner, during my short tenure with the departments, and this is not a reflection of our programs or staff, this is a reflection of the system. What I have observed is that if we have 20 programs, we have 20 databases and data platforms. And these different systems are not always playing well with each other or speaking well with each other, which means that we have a somewhat of a fragmented data system, which is integral to a well-functioning department. We're hoping by having this capacity onboard, which would reside in our admin services team, we can bring some efficiency to the different data platforms that exist and build our capacity moving forward into, as we move forward into dealing with future disasters as well. Over.
Thank you.
Yeah. So in the slide I have, I also had put next to all the positions, what goals that that position helps us meet, what modernization goals, and also which foundational capabilities. So I was able to really go through and align these positions with which of those requirements they're able to help us with. So it's really, it was pretty surprising how many things that these positions will do for us.
Tom, in the chat box, I see someone saying, feel free to share your presentation. So if you could do that and just in 10 seconds, go like show the slides for us to be on the same page, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So, okay, there it is. There's the, the slide with the positions listed. And I, as I said, I have which goals they align with and which foundational capabilities. So like the quality improvement analyst really helps us with goal number three, but also the one, two, four, and five foundational capabilities. So just really aligning these positions with what we need to do is really important. And also for this, for us to get funded, we have to demonstrate this. So the next slide I'll move on is the regional funding, 5102 funds. And we have two positions that have been existing through this funding, the epidemiologist position, which obviously, you know, during COVID was doing a lot of work, collecting that data that we see all the time on our website. And then also a long-term care facilities infection prevention position, which has been going out to long-term care facilities in all three counties, doing some different outbreak response work as well as prevention. And I was going to have Eric, Eric's worked with that program quite a bit, and let him speak about that position and our new proposed position. Okay. Yeah, in 2017, modernization funding allowed us to hire a regional public health nurse for infection prevention in these nursing homes, assisted living facilities, memory care. This, this nurse also analyzes and evaluates surveillance and outbreak data in the region, as well as providing backup on communicable disease investigations as they occur for all three counties as needed. With the volume of long-term care facilities, this, this position is overwhelmed, and obviously COVID has had a major impact on the response of this position as well. New part, new public health modernization funding would allow us to hire a public health nurse to assist in these outbreak prevention trainings and outbreak investigations in, in our three counties. But we also want to expand this to include other vulnerable populations, such as homeless shelters, warming shelters, adult foster homes, intellectual and developmental disability homes, youth programs with congregate living settings, and drug treatment programs. Special focus will be given to organizations that serve behavioral health clients, which comprises a large portion of our vulnerable populations.
Eric, if I just may, Commissioners, in 2017 or 2018, when we had the modernization framework offered to us, we were, you know, as a, as a region and as a local entity, we were offered a few hundred thousand dollars. Even then, we knew the magnitude of the need and the work that had to be done. So within the congregate setting, we prioritized long-term care facilities. So this gap has always been there. It's just that now that we're receiving additional, or we might be receiving additional funds through modernization, we can build the capacity to now support the vast array of congregate settings in our communities. So that's one piece. The other piece, Commissioners, for the purposes of this grant, the region that we're referring to would be the tri-county Jefferson, Crook, and Deschutes. So there are different, you know, definitions of regions, but for the purposes of this, it's the three counties that I just mentioned. Over.
Great. Thanks, Eric, and Nahad. Then the final new position being proposed is the environmental hazards preparedness coordinator position. So this is the person that will work on putting together the required regional all-hazards preparedness plan. And yes, definitely, we could work with Nathan's team over at the sheriff's office and, and helping getting that plan put together. And this position will also help bolster our emergency preparedness work that we've been doing. As we, you know, obviously, in the future, we're going to have more and more of this type of work going on based on trends. And, yeah, this will be an exciting new position, doing some work we really haven't been able to do up to this point. And it's definitely something that's really highly prioritized through the modernization funding. And so the next slide is going to show the workforce funding. That's, once again, a, the set $375,000 one-time amount, and it's for 18 months. And we're going to use it to cover the salary of our health services, public information officer position. And that position will also be helping with us meeting some of our goals and foundational capabilities. And then we also are proposing an admin support specialist position to help out with all the modernization positions, with the administrative work, where we just don't really have the administrative support that those positions will need with all this work that's going on in the future. So this is just one-time funding through the 5103, and we don't anticipate it coming back the next biennium. And so here's a look on this slide of the FTE being requested, the new and the existing. As you can see, we have 4.2 existing FTE, so that would be just to continue this FTE into the future. And I had mentioned some of the positions that we've been having do this work for quite some time already. And then we also have, are requesting 5.0 new FTE for the new positions that we are requesting. And we feel that we've really put together a nice comprehensive program and staffing units that really will help us meet the modernization standards and really do some work that our, our county public health really would like to work on in the future. And so this is just a great opportunity for us to expand some of our services in areas that, that we definitely have had some gaps in services. And then finally, this is just a simple summary of what we're requesting, requesting to apply for the modernization funding in general overall. We are requesting to be granted 5.0 new FTE and continue the 4.2 existing FTE to help with our local, regional, and workforce modernization work. And this, all including materials and services and so forth, would be a total of $2,073,352 for the FY '22 and '23 biennium. So that is in tot, the totality of the... So that is the totality of the requests we put together. And it aligns with the guidelines for funding that the state had given us as well.
Hey, Tom, before we open up for more questions, if you could go to the first two or three slides very quickly, that 10 seconds, so to make sure all of our eyeballs are looking at the same information, please go back.
Okay.
Go to slide two. I think this was already covered. Go to slide three. Okay, so these are the goals, as Tom mentioned, that are expected for local entities or those who receive funding to achieve around communicable diseases, environmental health, and full implementation of the modernization. Go to slide four, please. And then these are, as part of achieving those goals, these are the foundational capabilities. These are the inputs that would be expected for local public health agency to build in their department so that they can achieve those goals. And these are the five areas where then, these five areas and the goals then speak to the rationale behind the inputs in terms of staffing that we requested, which is, I think, the next slide. So I just wanted to make sure we're all on the, and these are the deliverables that by next biennium are expected to be addressed. Thank you.
And there's, there's the one slide I had that kind of broke down the different amounts. And also that we are getting approximately $1.1 million more than we did receive in the last biennium. So that was a, with the increased funding that state did through the legislation, that was really has helped bolster this effort. And then I think we've covered these slides, just connecting the goals and foundational capabilities that these positions help address. And then FTE and the summary of the request.
Great. Thank you very much. So one of the observations is with the existing FTE is going to be able to be funded by these dollars also. So, you know, there's five ask, but also a couple of these other positions, especially the epidemiologist is pretty exciting because that is the big picture item. But yeah, thanks to the state legislature for providing these funds. And this seems to be, yeah, a pretty well-thought-out way to deploy. Any thoughts?
Tom or Nahad, or Eric, I'm trying to get a sense of the, the future of this kind of body of funding. Clearly, there are positions that were supported by public health modernization in the last biennium that now we are able to continue and then even expand upon in this biennium. You also mentioned that the 5103 funding source was, they're calling it one-time workforce funding. So does that mean that we anticipate that the other two, 5101 and 5102, will likely be funded again next biennium? I mean, nobody, you know, nobody can 100% accurately predict what's going to happen the next biennium. But is the legislature essentially indicating that they want to continue modernization for many years to come? Or would, would some of the capacity that's being built right now then be covered by some other programs in the future?
Yeah, no, that, I think you hit it on the nose there. Yes, they have indicated that this funding will continue in the future, foreseeable future. And, you know, we've had some large increases over the last three bienniums. We started with, the state had a $5 million statewide funding amount, and then that became $15 million, and then this biennium is $45 million. Now I don't see it going up at that same rate for the upcoming biennium. But they have indicated that most likely it will not come through 5101 or 02 funds. They will funnel it through other channels that already exist. That's kind of the direction they're going in. I mean, nothing is final, but that's what I was told, this funding would be distributed differently.
Okay.
I just put it in somewhat of a perspective, and I don't want to sound ungrateful at all. Yes, these are good signals that we are paying attention to public health infrastructure. At the same time, Oregon was one of the states with the lowest investments, per capita investment in public health. So it's good to have perspective on what has happened over, you know, the history of our state. At the same time, it's also good to acknowledge that we're trying to correct actions and course in this regard and pay attention to public health infrastructure.
Thanks for that long-term perspective, historical perspective. That's good.
And just one quick anecdote about Oregon. Many states have local public health inspectors that go into nursing homes twice a year, just like we go into McDonald's or Arby's twice a year because we have to. And we don't have to, there's no requirement at all for us to inspect these vulnerable populations. So I think this is a step in the right direction. And it's something that I've been trying to get us to do for 25 years. And so I'm hoping that the door has been cracked open a little bit here.
Great.
Well, they must have been listening to you, Eric.
There you go.
You think?
Well, I didn't want to take all of the credit.
Finally.
I know, it's really, you know, those are the vulnerable people. They were the people that we were really worried about with COVID. And to think we're not inspecting, gosh.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there support?
I move approval of an application for public health modernization funding for FY '22, '23, or the '22, '23 biennium.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? Being done, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
And chair vote yes. Well done. Pretty exciting for this investment coming our way.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Item number two, request to apply for Measure 110 Behavioral Health Resource Network Grant Funds. So this is the other side of the House.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I am Janice Garceau, Director of Behavioral Health for Deschutes County. Apologies for not being there in person today. I have been in back-to-back Zoom meetings, so couldn't make that work and be downtown. I am here today to request the board's approval to apply for Measure 110 Behavioral Health Resource Network. For short, we're calling them BHRNs, Grant Funds. These are funds coming through the appropriation that was the result of Measure 110, and I believe House Bill 775 or Senate Bill, I forget now the exact bill name, that help fund intensive outreach and engagement and harm reduction, substance use disorder interventions in the community to address the changes that were the results of the passage of Measure 110. We are currently applying in partnership with Best Care with your approval. You have the summary and the summary budget, but we are applying for several of the five possible activities that can be undertaken under these grant funds, specifically peer and recovery mentor outreach and supports, substance use disorder intervention and treatment, harm reduction services in particular. And I can provide some detail about each one of these efforts if you would like. We have a budget in front of you, the total amount for these services between, I believe they anticipate funds distributing in February of 2022 and funding services through June 30th of 2023, the end of the biennium. The total amount for the project is $2,403,356. It funds 12.2 FTE in several projects. And these funds are anticipated to continue because they are funded, as you know, through the marijuana revenue.
So, Janice?
Yes, ma'am.
You're asking in here for a vehicle, which I believe we approved last week with ARPA funding. So is it possible for us to take that vehicle off the ARPA and leave it here? It was a homeless outreach vehicle.
This is a very different set of activities and a different project than the one that was before the board on Friday. So this is related to a case manager and peer support specialist who would be specifically connected to the housing contracts for beds for some of the individuals being served and would be providing intensive substance use-focused case management outreach and support to those individuals. So that's why there was a vehicle in the budget.
So the, this bullet that says increased homeless outreach and engagement services, that's not overlapping at all with Colleen's team?
This would be part of Colleen's team. It would be specifically providing services to the Measure 110 population and providing recovery mentors and a CADC case manager to provide supports to individuals who would be placed in beds that we contract with shelters to provide specifically to this population. So it's a very targeted, specific intervention for extremely high-risk individuals with substance use disorders who may need a shelter or residential placement.
So yeah, I read this right after we did our other ARPA thing, and I thought, oh, boy, here we go. You know, it came in one, two from the Health Department. It does sound kind of like the same efforts. I know that you can, you know, kind of break it down into the priorities. This is definitely going to add capacity for, you know, people that are truly homeless plus other people that are dealing with addiction issues also, is the conclusion I would come to. Doesn't have to be homeless.
Yeah, I mean, it was only the fourth bullet that talks about homelessness, but...
Yeah, these individuals may not, in fact, be homeless at all. They may simply be people that we are encountering in the community in a variety of settings, whether that be the jail, whether that be through our harm reduction efforts, whether that be through other projects who have significant substance use conditions. And remember that the Measure 110 service population are those individuals who historically were receiving low-level criminal charges, might have been housed in the jail. And these are efforts to engage those individuals since the, the charging decisions will no longer be made because of the passage of Measure 110. And it really relates to the question that you raised, Commissioner, last Friday, when we were having a different conversation about, now that Measure 110 has passed, how are these individuals incentivized to engage in services? And the vision of the commission that put together the request for proposals for Measure 110 funding was to focus funds on intensive outreach and engagement for the hardest-to-reach, most difficult-to-engage persons with substance use disorders in the community, which is why we focused a lot of our efforts heavily on harm reduction and recovery mentors or peer support specialists because they're so effective with that population.
So, yeah, you know, we asked you about how are we going to measure this last week, and you mentioned, well, if we'd be funded for a study for a population, for a reference group, and all that kind of stuff. There's a flip side to that is, you know, if we have more people homeless and more people taking drugs and falling off into some bad situations, that's the measurement also. So I'm just letting you know that, you know, so we're going to add resources. We're going to tax people taking drugs. We're not going to charge people with drugs. We're going to try to help people that are addicted. And there's going to be a free market system, which is going to want to sell more of this stuff. We're just building a system that's going to grow on itself, both sides of the equation. So, you know, I guess the message is, and whoever can explain it to me, we don't need to do that now, but the day you need to be backstopped because it's getting out of control, yeah, I'm ready for that, too. This is the political end of it. I mean, we're going to, we're going to decriminalize drugs. We're going to let people spin out of control. We're going to offer services to people that are spun out of control. And we're just going to keep building these two sides of a black hole of resources. So...
Yeah, I would, I would...
And as I say, I'm just letting the world know. That's the way I'm seeing this.
Drugs that are, the drugs that are addressed, the drugs that are addressed through Measure 110 are not legal drugs to sell. We're not, so it's not a free market that's putting, putting those things...
Backstop to this is, you know, the next step we'll have to take. We don't need to debate it.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm not debating, I'm not following what, I'm not following your...
So there's a free market system. We're not, and, you know, for legal and illegal drugs, there's going to be people wanting to get involved with that. There's going to be people want to make money on it. Now we have a behavioral health system saying, if you've spun out of control because you've had too much of this and your personality was such that you have substance use disorder, we're providing lots of resources for you to get out of that system. The system's not going to stop on either side, and at some point, it's just not going to work very well. I'm just not supportive of the big picture. And that's the voters, you know, chose this 110, so...
Exactly. It's like the person that came from Pennsylvania because when he answered the question in Sisters, oh, yes, well, everyone knows you get the services and all the drugs you want. So, you know, if that is what the country thinks, you know, it is truly, it's an interesting dilemma. What's, what's really going to happen?
So, yeah, I'm supportive. Let's apply for funds, but as I say, the big picture is not, not pretty in this whole scenario.
I know. Didn't we last week have someone on the border? It was a woman from Bend. She was on the most-wanted drug list or something, and she was just arrested. And I just thought, oh, my gosh, yes. So we're definitely, we're in the national spotlight.
Well, okay, so I guess I would just say that to reduce the amount of illegal drug use, substance, substance use disorders in our community, we need a whole suite of things to happen. We need prevention work. We need treatment. And we need, we need law enforcement. I mean, and the fact that, the fact that Measure 110 decriminalizes possession of certain substances does not mean that people aren't still being tracked down and arrested and busted for dealing, you know, those substances. So...
So is there a motion?
The rest, you know, the rest of it, I mean, you know, we can have our beefs or whatever with Measure 110, but what we're looking at here is a proposal to use Measure 110 funding for, for treatment.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
I would, you know, I just want to make sure that we have, that we've thoroughly unpacked this before we make any motions and that, you know, questions or concerns that people have have been addressed.
Do you have the amount for the vehicle? I'm just curious because the other vehicle was supposed to be like a pickup, $60,000. It was going to, you know, be like a four-wheel drive so they could get around everywhere. Is this the same kind of vehicle?
This is the, I'm sure this is the standard cost for a, typically, we, we purchase, I believe, all-wheel-drive cars, but the cost is $35,000. It is not for the heavy-duty vehicle needed if you're doing outreach into places where there are unmaintained roads. So these folks are providing services all over the community to different agency locations where they will encounter these individuals for services.
Okay, so $35,000 then is what you're talking about. All right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. I move approval to apply for Measure 110 Behavioral Health Resource Network Grant Funds of $2.4 million, $2,403,156. And it's 12.2 FTE from Janice. of 2.4 million, $2,403,156, and it's 12.2 FTE from January 1st to June 30th, 2023.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chairville Jess. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks, Janice.
Item number three, consideration of a request to convert .5 peer support specialist to a .6.
This is a big one.
Peer support specialist.
I got.
Is this another $2 million ask?
No, no, it was a, no ask, fiscally actually. So Holly Harrow's Program Manager, Deschutes County Behavioral Health, but thanks for having me today. So I've been before you a couple of times with these little requests here and there, and so as positions become vacant, we take a look at them to see whether the schedule and whether the FTE amount makes sense for the position and the schedule. So this was one of those little tweaks that we have an opportunity to make that will actually have a pretty big impact on us. So right now, our weekend positions are primarily .6 positions, so they work 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Saturday and Sunday. By having this .5, it's created this gap in the schedule that in pre-difficult staffing times wasn't a big deal, but now that we're kind of consistently in a minimum staffing situation, we really need that body in the building providing services alongside their colleagues on the weekends. So this is an opportunity for us to make that change. There, it's about a $3,000 fiscal impact, but we have vacancy savings to cover that, so there's no additional ask to the county for that cost, and we will be able to easily absorb that cost within our existing budget.
But I'd like to thank you, I mean, we, you know, we are, when we're adding FTE, let's do it in a public meeting like this, you know, this one is kind of just that calibrating to the schedule item, but we're seeing this growth all over the place too, and we want to acknowledge it, you know, and I'm, there's good justification for it, there's funding following, but every fiscal year, we need to look at the big picture and how much general funds subsidizing our policy choices, so thank you very much.
Did we ever get an answer back from St. Charles if they were going to help with funding for the stabilization center?
We have not received any sort of official answer from them one way or the other. We did have a meeting and there's, I'll let Commissioner Chang actually answer that.
I, I didn't walk away from that meeting feeling like St. Charles was, was very ready to make an investment in the stabilization center. I think we should continue to work with them and to make the value proposition, but that, you know, after that first meeting, I, I didn't feel like we were close yet.
Well, and this is still COVID times and very much, you know, different priorities.
Yeah, I mean, and that was, that was a big part of, that was a big part of their, their response back to us was, you know, we are in, we are in crisis management mode right now. COVID has filled up the hospital, prevented them from doing the elective procedures that actually generate funds for the hospital, and, and so their, their bottom line is not nearly what it, what it has been in previous years at the moment.
Okay, well, don't forget, they do have one level in the tower that is not being used. They're using it for storage. And I was told last May, they were going to take 30 months to study and see what they need to do, but if we have 5,000 procedures and surgeries that have not been done for our community, I'm sure our community is getting really, really, really nervous. So anyway, I would hope that they would make a decision sooner rather than later.
I, I, I think the issue is not just space and beds, but also staffing. And Commissioner Dare, as you observed, there's a fleet of traveling nurses at St. Charles right now because there's, they're down so many positions, you know, at the current time. There's a whole lot of people, a whole lot of healthcare professionals out there who are feeling demoralized and beleaguered by the COVID outbreak and the, you know, having people come into the hospital with COVID and denying that they have COVID and, you know, being angry at care providers who are trying to treat them for COVID and other things. It's a, it's a very difficult time to staff up at the moment.
Well, back to our stabilization center.
Yes.
The request is to align this 10th of a, 10th of a FTE position for the.
So we don't have to do anything today.
I don't believe so. Doesn't it?
Oh yeah, and that's fine.
On our consent agenda.
And just, just for your information, I am also tracking the Impax Grant, the $2.4 million grant that we were awarded last year. The $10 million for the state was refunded this, this year, and it's my understanding that existing grantees will be able to reapply. So we will be watching them, waiting to hear more information about when, how much, all of those details, but if, you know, the board approves, of course, we would be looking to buy us a little more time because right now is a very difficult time to be asking anyone for funding, given everything else going on in the world. So it's, it would probably hopefully buy us a little bit more time.
Great.
Great, thank you.
We'll see this on consent agenda.
Yep.
Item number four, Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program Discussion. So this is memo provided by Eric on this. There's been some, some great community engagement in this topic. Do you want to take it away?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. This item is known as CPACE, which stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. Additional information came in this morning, was emailed to the board. I printed that out in case you would like to see a copy, but it came from, from 350 Deschutes and Paula Latassa, who is also here, but I just wanted to make sure.
Oh yeah, I printed that. Thanks, Eric.
Well, so really, there's the memo provided, this is a published agenda item, this is our opportunity as Commissioners to, you know, put directions to this, discuss it a little bit, public meeting, where this is kind of our work session mode for this item.
Yes, yes. And also Greg Munn has been involved with some work groups, so he's here. Scott Langton may or may not be on the, on the line, but Scott has been involved in some discussions, as have Dave Doyle. So we don't really have any expertise in-house, but different staff have been learning about CPACE and different pieces of it. Would you like, would the board like me to kind of walk through the memo or what's the board's preference?
Yeah, a little bit, you know, because that will get some conversations started, so we have the different steps.
Sure. Just in terms of background, CPACE is really a funding mechanism to pay for clean energy projects. And the way the program works is a commercial building owner receives a long-term financing for a capital improvement that will reduce energy or, or generate energy. And then the building owner repays the cost of the improvements over a long term through a benefits assessment, so kind of on the, on the property tax, even though it's not a, a property tax. Our staff did a survey of.
You used your word benefit assessment. Is that just, you know, like a mortgage payment kind of deal? You know, it's like the long-term payment on debt?
Yeah, it's similar to like a local improvement district.
Yeah, so I mean, there's X amount and then it's just paid off over time.
Yeah, and then there's a lien on the property and that's what, what helps secure the loan with, with the lender. Our staff did a survey of different communities. CPACE is throughout the United States, different states and different localities have different rules, but staffed at a survey of Hartford, Connecticut, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Omaha, Nebraska, and San Francisco, California. There's a summary of that survey in the staff report. In addition, there are CPACE programs in the Northwest. Multnomah County has a program, as does Clark County, and 350 Deschutes was very interested in, in the Clark County program. So there's information about the Clark County program and as well as some follow-up information from Clark County. One thing that's important to note is, is Washington State's a little bit different than Oregon when it comes to CPACE because in the state of Washington, there's actually a requirement for commercial buildings to move forward with, with certain green building requirements. That's both for commercial, or that's both for new commercial buildings and existing. Then just some, you know, general background.
Acknowledging that, so that's referring to state requirements, project need to be done one way or the other, which pushes people to look for financing options, which would say, oh.
Yes.
CPACE, let's look into that. Yeah, so I'm.
The state, the Washington law increases the, the demand for these type of projects. The next section of the staff report just has some general background information about CPACE. If Deschutes County would start, was going to start a CPACE program, we would need to set up the tax assessment process that, that secures the loan and fore, and forecloses on the property if, if that loan's not being repaid. The loan runs with the, the property, not, not the property owner. And then the last part of the staff report just walks through some options for the board's consideration. It may be early at this point, but really, there are several options. One is, is status quo, not to move forward with CPACE. Another option is to set up the tax assessment process and let any interested cities start a CPACE program, and we would just kind of be that, that piece of, of the collection of it, but we would not operate the program. And then the third main option, the third option is to have Deschutes County operate a CPACE program. And within that option, there are different categories where we could try to contract some of that out or, or keep it all in-house.
Eric, I thought it was interesting with your analysis, the fact that Hartford, Connecticut ended their program, and then San Francisco said that they had very low, low volume, not enough resources. And, and Clark County actually was established by ordinance, but only in October of this year. But that's a Washington State issue because Washington State believes this is a really important program?
Yeah, the state of Washington passed a law allowing the counties to establish CPACE. And then Clark, as you noted, Clark County just recently established their program.
Because, you know, the, the paper had an editorial on how we should pass this, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of support for the program, and I actually have a son who works in green energy, and I, I think it is really important, but it's just interesting that, you know, what we're seeing, it's, you know, it seems like Deschutes County is going to really have to step it up in order to make this a successful program on some level, do you think?
Well, Deschutes County would have to be involved because of the, the property tax assessment piece of it. You know, most of, most development occurs in the city, so if, if, if this program moved, moved forward, most likely the projects would occur in the cities, but county involvement is necessary because of the, the property assessment or the benefits assessment.
And, and there are opportunities outside the cities, you know, and we heard from a farmer who's interested in, in using CPACE. We hit, we do have destination resorts with hotels, for example, outside of, outside of incorporated cities. But just to kind of speak to Commissioner Dare's comments, I, I just wanted to say, in, I don't think in any of the cases that are, that are, that are provided, does the county see itself as the driver of demand for, you know, for this opportunity? The county is enabling entities who want to access this kind of financing to do so. So I don't think, I, I definitely do not see it as our responsibility to initiate a program and then market it. I think that if we want to do this, we are essentially responding to demand that is, or, or requests and demand that is being put forward from the community. And we have heard from, we've heard from hotel operators, you know, hotel builders, we've heard from affordable housing developers, we have heard from museums, we have heard from farmers. So there are, there are entities in the community who have expressed an interest in using this financing option if it was available to them. So the, I, you know, in my mind, the question for us is, do we want to enable these people, these commercial property owners to have access to another source of financing or not? If we do want to do that, then, then the next question is, how much work is it for us? And do we want to do that? And, and we have a range of options to decide what level of work we would or wouldn't want to take on in enabling this.
So Greg Munn, our finance director is available. Could you, so if, if there was some project and it was X amount, you know, 100,000 or a million dollars, whatever, some number, what does it look like to have an assessment on the tax bill? And that is, is that through your office or assessor?
So it would be, can you restate the question?
So if we're putting a line item on the bill for 20 years, who, who creates that?
So it, so the advantage of the CPACE lending is that it provides lenders and it, or a, an interest in being able to loan funds to projects that they may not have had access to loan funds to before. So for example, a banker is typically, typically going to look at the bottom line of a project, whether it's a revenue generating project, there's a return on the investment and whatnot. So I think one of the challenges with, with some of these other projects, whether they're seismic based or they're environmental, more of an environmental projects, they don't have the revenue associated with it. So I think that's the advantage, that's where CPACE comes in, in sort of a big picture. The, from the lender's perspective, they, they gain some stability and some certainty in the funding by having that attached to, as Eric mentioned, a benefits assessment, or it's like a local improvement district where the actual recourse for the, the loan is attached to the property itself. So it becomes, that loan would become junior to property tax assessment. So there's some, from a lender's standpoint, it makes it more attractive and makes it more feasible. I think that's sort of the summary. I might be missing a few of the detail points, but that's sort of the summary of the program and the need for it and from a lender's perspective how it makes it work.
So then, as I say, implementing at the county, the finance and tax office mails, mails the annual tax statement, the assessor's office kind of creates the value and slices and dices all the assessments on that. So is it, does it start at the assessor's office?
So, so there's no, there's no regular annual work with either the assessor or the tax office. The work for the tax office comes into play if there is a foreclosure.
And what we saw.
So in that, in terms of that process alone, there's very, there's very minimal work and could possibly be no work at all. I had a conversation with Clark County, Washington about this, actually a couple of conversations, and one of the points that came out of the conversation was that there had been only two foreclosures in the entire nation for CPACE. So from the treasurer's perspective, that was pretty good because we're, and, and one of those foreclosures apparently was remedied before it actually went all the way through.
Yeah, the, the data that Eric collected from Hartford, Milwaukee, Omaha, and San Francisco, there was one that, one default that went through a restructuring process without any issues. So, so, you know, hearing that there have only been two defaults total across the nation for hundreds of projects, that's, that's useful to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so for my role as a tax collector, there, there is, the only time there would be effectively any work would be if there was a default, which the odds are fairly low of that, but in the event that there was, it would go through the same process as property that defaults on its taxes, which we already, which we do annually now.
So Greg, when we talked, like some months back, there was some concern about, about like staff work, work time impacts. What, what were the roles or functions that you were picturing staff having to cover at that time that maybe you're now not as worried about?
So, so based on our conversations with Multnomah County, who's been working on this now, I think for about five years, they're, they said they spent a fair amount of staff time getting the program up to. of staff time getting the program up to speed, and they think once, they thought once the program was off and running, it was about a half of an FTE's worth of work. That number was also confirmed by conversation with Clark County. They think theirs is very new, but they think in the long run, that there'll be about a half of an FTE worth of administrative work. And they also assume that those would be covered by fees, those costs. So I think their costs are somewhere in the ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year to run a program. There's different ways to run a program. It can be either administratively focused, and so there's a lot of, a lot of the work is done internally inside the organization. Or it can be more of a packet of work that you give to a developer and say, here's what you need to do, you have to run it around and make sure all of the Ts get crossed and the Is get dotted. I think the program that Clark County has has been more of that. So my conversations with one of their policy analysts has been that most of the work is really fallen to the developers. And they're incentivized to make this happen, so apparently, that's, the way they do it is run fairly smoothly.
So one of the things I think of is, this sounds like it's for existing, I mean, it could be for existing or future development, but, you know, the thing that would excite me, you know, that I'm wanting to really support, is existing infrastructure, existing buildings being able to be redeveloped. I don't know that we're in that situation as much, you know, I don't know that this is a question for you, Greg, I'm just thinking about, you know, what would be the motivator here? Because if we're putting this incentive in for new development, I don't know that that's the same as existing development. So I guess that's for us to think through a little.
Some of the entities who contacted us and said that they would like to have access to this financing, were requesting that for existing buildings. I mean, like, you know, like when Tom, when Neil Kelly, when they wrote us a letter about this, they talked about how they'd use this financing to retrofit and upgrade their existing building. So that's, you know, I certainly think that, you know, the, of the entities who contacted us, the one that was most, you know, "We are ready to do this project right now if you enable this financing," that was for new development of two new hotels by, or two new properties by that Meritay group. But a number of the other entities who contacted us have existing buildings that they had expressed interest in having financing to be able to do upgrades for.
Yeah, so I guess I didn't, we have a lot of advocacy on this, obviously.
We do.
But I don't know that I really saw anybody saying, "This is the project that would work for this if it was in place." It's like a step or two away from a specific project, you know. Yeah, there's ideas of projects out there. So yeah, I'm just thinking, we could put, I don't know how much effort we'd want to put into this, and then find out, well, you know, we ended up with two new hotels. Not that that's bad, or whatever, but, you know.
They're already open. It's the Element and the Holiday Inn Express. But they just want to upgrade them.
No, they want to do two new projects.
Having recently, respectively opened these two, we are actively recently opened, is what their letter says.
But they want, they want access to this financing for two other projects that are, and, yeah, I mean, if you, the person who has been in discussion, in detailed discussions with a bunch of these commercial property owners who are interested in using this financing is Paula, and she's here, if we'd like to ask her to come up and specifically tell us who is, who has said, you know, "Oh, if this financing was available, I would do this project."
So I don't know that I'm, I'm interested in firsthand discussion, so, you know, maybe that's the place. So this is our work session to move this forward or not, I mean, this is us. I've talked to Paula a lot on this subject, so I don't know that that's where I want to go. Are you just proceeding a little farther with this?
Okay, what does it, what do we have to do as far as implementing an ordinance? Who can answer that question?
I can tell you, because a lot of that would fall to legal, we'd have to farm that out. You know, I'm now one lawyer, so I don't have the staffing to be doing that right now with the other stuff we have on the, so we would, at least to the extent county legal would have to be involved with that, that would require, have to hire some outside attorneys.
So, and it's been offered to do it pro bono?
Yeah, I don't know the ability of the person that's offering it, I'd want to make sure he or she knows what they're doing before they're implementing an ordinance at the county.
So then there's overhead in doing that, you know, kind of vetting the pro bono work before or after the fact?
My impression is that this is, this is a person who's done CPACE ordinances for a number of jurisdictions, including potentially the Clark County. So this is the person who has done the Clark County ordinance for them, that apparently has been highly successful, driven by state requirements.
But that's Washington State, and that started October, month, you know, October of 2021, so.
Well, I mean, this same gentleman, I mean, Greg and I had a chance to speak to him probably a half a year ago. He's done CPACE ordinance work and CPACE legislation in a number of states across the nation, so this is, I mean, you know, we would certainly want to review his credentials, but, you know, I would fully expect that this is a, this is a person who would be evaluated to be expert in the law associated with this, you know, with this kind of a program, and that we'd be able to accept, you know, accept their work.
I would feel more comfortable with Dave's, you know, if you investigated, you were comfortable, that's where I think we should be. You know, clearly, there's the need for the project. We've had, you know, a lot of the community has asked for it, and it is fascinating that it never really made it in Portland. I find that kind of, you know, such a conflict. But, you know, we have a lot of people here that really seem to feel like it would be a great addition. So I think it's worth it to look it up and do your work, Dave, and then if that man can actually do the job.
So then the guidance from the board would be to proceed in evaluating a?
Right.
What would the, what would an ordinance look like? Let's spend some time doing that. So then it's on the desk, so it moves it forward?
Definitely.
I guess one question I have is, would the ordinance look different if we were, depending on what, what option we have, what we want to choose for who's running administering the program? You know, there was, there was the option to just, you know, like, enable the tax assessment, and then let, you know, let the cities, you know, start a program. There was the option to use a third-party administrator, there was an option to do it internally. Would the ordinance look different?
You know, I think the meat, the nuts and bolts of the ordinance is to basically give these loans priority over existing liens other than the tax lien. So that piece of it's going to be the same regardless. There may be a little nuance based on the administrative part of it, but the actual financing piece that is giving this really a priority position, just short of the, you know, the tax liens, that's going to be the same regardless, I would suspect.
Okay, so we don't need to make a choice on, like, how this would be operated before?
You know, I don't know, I'll defer to maybe Greg, if he's been in discussions with that attorney fellow.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need to do that. But there are a couple of different options in terms of managing it, I think it's been discussed here. One, and one maybe that hasn't, maybe it's covered in the staff report, is we also have a consortium of other counties in the state that we're looking at doing this. The idea there is, collectively, can we use each other's expertise and learnings to do something that's broader, and maybe it's administered more from a state level? I don't want to say it's like the state of Washington, because theirs is different in terms of what's driving their CPACE program, which would be different than this. But Benton County just adopted an ordinance, and along, I think the city of Corvallis did as well, to move, to essentially communicate that their governing body is interested in the CPACE program, and to pursue this on, at least on a statewide basis. So there's a few different options in terms of administering the program moving forward, and I think that can somewhat be tied to the resolution, or the direction given by the board, but it doesn't have to be. As Dave was.
Well, so, I mean, this is basically, the answer is, let's look into it deeper with an intention of, you know, making decision. I mean, I just think, because there's a lot of variables here still, so, you know, the management of the program, what does a third-party management look like? So now, if we're going to proceed a little bit, we need to know more, down a couple different paths to make a choice.
So this attorney, Michael Yaki, is able to generate for us a draft, a draft ordinance, I mean, is that, would everyone be comfortable with that being a next step for Dave to review the credentials of, you know, of these entities, and then review, review a piece of draft work?
Well, I'm thinking, an ordinance is going to be the final product, so we need to, you know, and it's going to refer to, you know, what are the agreements, and how is it going to operate, and how much of the management's going to happen at the county? So basically, it's going to need to be a package. So, yeah, but he would, he would know what the package would look like, and what the variables are, which could be provided to us. So, yeah, we need to see what's the next step. The answer is, we're moving forward in some fashion, and we need to learn more now on implementing it.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, I guess, what I thought I just heard was, you know, that the guts of it, creating, you know, creating this tax assessment system, that's going to look the same regardless of the operation structure for it? But if, you know, so, you know, I think draft ordinance language, you could review that, you know, fairly soon. But if we wanted to add the additional piece of direction of, we are interested in this, you know, operating kind of structure, or that operating structure, then we could also task staff to dig into that for us as well, and bring both pieces back, not just, not just the one.
Well, and I guess what I was, we didn't use the same words, but we're going to have to know that information anyways. You know, if we have this, that means we're going to go down this path or that path. So we're going to have to see all that.
Okay.
I mean, we're not going to make it, we're not going to finalize one document without knowing how we're going to implement the project.
So do we want the staff to then bring us back more information on each operating structure? Or are there a couple that we are?
Well, I want it to be done by third, I would envision, third-party management of this whole program, providing Deschutes County a spreadsheet with the next 20 years of payments. We plug it into our system, and then whatever fees there are, you know, we need to figure that out. But some simple thing with a third-party partner on this, is what I think would happen. But I don't know what that looks like, that's very generic by saying that.
Okay, that works for me.
Commissioner Adair?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, there we go. So that's the direction.
Then to be clear, am I to reach out to this fellow to see about getting a draft ordinance prepared, and to take a look at it, and get back with you folks on our assessment of it?
I would think you would perhaps contact Benton County and Corvallis, just to see where, you know, if they've done their, you know, like as Greg said, why not use everybody's expertise, see what they're, you know, where they're at in the, you know, in the pathway forward?
I had a note here to call Benton County, I know their attorney real well.
Right, I would think that would be an excellent idea, and, you know, if they've done their research too, it could, you know, could really be helpful for us.
Yeah, I think you have two separate issues here. You have the legal?
Right.
Election debt security piece, which is the ordinance, and then you have how, if you do it, is it going to operate? The ordinance is creating in law an ability to give this priority lien position that otherwise they might not have. There might be five people on title with liens ahead of them, they'd be number six, so therefore, they're not going to loan the money. Now they go to number two, right behind the county, for taxes essentially, and then it's easier to get your folks to loan you money. I mean, I think that's ultimately what this is all about, is a way to entice people to loan you money by not being number eight in line to collect, but now being number two right behind taxes. So that piece, I'm assuming, is going to be pretty similar across platforms. How you operate it, whether it's in-house, whether it's an outside entity, some group of people, that I suspect it's going to be the administrative, operational issue for Greg and Eric and those folks to be able to vet, that's.
Yeah, as I say, and I mean, I don't think, I don't see, you know, hiring somebody for this, this is, I mean, unless, you know, it'll be a slight growth in activity, obviously, in our, in our offices, but we're not going to have the office of CPACE management at Deschutes County. I don't see that, and I don't think that's what being asked for.
Yeah, I, I want to, my goal is to make this financing available to commercial property owners. The way that it's structured, I'm completely open on.
Well, and as I say, I mean, I really struggle with this. This is taking a private property, private industry, private banking, and putting that lien in the, in the long-term, you know, tax liability column, be able to sell it with the property. I, there's, this is policy change that I may not be real comfortable with, you know, if there's a majority here, that's fine. But, yeah, it's kind of, government taking on responsibility of a private property's ownership, and then advocating for, you know, hopefully, it's good, for good environmental reasons, but it could be possibly abused in other ways, not abused, but, you know, utilized in other ways that weren't intended. And then, I don't know, I want to have meetings about it multiple times a year about approving these things. I don't know what it looks like.
I would see it very differently. This is not a government program. This is government, you know, enabling the institutional structure that allows the private sector to work. We have lenders who are interested in lending money, we have commercial property owners that are interested in borrowing money to make investments in the value and the performance of their properties. And then we have a whole, we heard from a whole bunch of service providers, architects, energy service performance contractors, solar installers, and other entities. All of those are private enterprise, who are basically just saying, "Hey, can you enable this so that we can, we can make good investments in commercial property in our community?"
So it was just pointed out that we're going to, we're going to save the second position in a debt associated with an entity for this, opposed to others. Any other debt is private industry. Somebody bought something, service or product, took on debt to do it, maybe it didn't pay off. So now we're perturbing the system by putting it in the second spot, not letting it fit in where traditionally would have fit in with a debt stack of some sort. So, I mean, it is perturbing the system, and yes, it's going to pay some contractor to engineer and install.
It has impacts if people, it has impacts if people default, among hundreds of projects.
We're setting the priority of the default, so, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not real comfortable with that.
Well, you don't have to take one of these loans.
As an elected official representing the people of Deschutes County, I don't know that I would, yeah, support this. I mean, that, okay, thank you.
So we've got, we've got legal work and kind of operating structure work to?
Yeah, what we can do is, I'll coordinate with Dave, and obviously, he'll have the ordinance piece of it, but we could do a summary table of how different programs operate, including the fees they charge. I think it'd be helpful to see Clark County versus Benton, and the city of Corvallis, and others.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your research, Eric, though.
Yeah.
You're welcome, it was a group effort. Laura Skundrick had a piece of it, and Greg, and Dave, so.
And the people that responded from around the country, and the advocacy work that's being done on this topic, so, thank you. All right. Item number five, discussion of a joint office on homelessness. There's a formal letter of interest provided, draft, so are you kicking this off too, Eric?
Yes. Good afternoon, for the record, Eric Propp, Deputy County Administrator. And also, we have Bend City Councilor and city staff here as well, so just wanted to acknowledge that. This item seeks board direction on whether or not to submit a letter of support for a pilot program related to a joint houselessness office. The joint office would be between Deschutes County, the city of Bend, and other cities who are interested in Deschutes County. As background, I'd like to start out with talking a little bit about the Emergency Homeless Task Force. That group was started by the- a little bit about the Emergency Homeless Task Force. That group was started by the City of Bend in the summer in collaboration with Deschutes County. It was co-chaired, or still is, by Commissioner Chang and City Councilor Perkins. The task force met once a month, starting in the summer. And the purpose of the task force was to inform the city and county on collaborative opportunities and develop actions towards ending homelessness. The group recently completed work on the following tools to improve coordination and outcomes related to homelessness. There's a draft community vision, a draft mission statement, draft milestones, and a draft strategic plan. The next steps for this group is to meet with additional community members on action planning, and that will be occurring this month. There's different categories of the action planning, including addressing unsheltered homelessness, expanding services, strategies for affordable housing, community engagement, and also discussions about driving community-wide efforts. Also, in the fall, as the commissioners know, there was a joint meeting with the City of Bend, and councilors and commissioners discussed the idea of a joint homelessness office. Staff was directed to explore the concept and create a draft structure of this office and to bring that back to the city councilors and the Board of County Commissioners sometime in mid-January. Also going on is, is Representative Jason Krupp's proposal for a pilot program. Representative Krupp has drafted legislation for the short session, and the draft legislation seeks to identify five communities that would like to move forward with this pilot program. Each of the communities would receive $1 million over a two-year period to help start and fund this office. And the concept is, is to actually identify the communities in the draft, or in the legislation. Based on that, Representative Krupp has worked with the Association of Oregon Counties and the League of Oregon Cities. And those two agencies put out a letter and an application process for communities to identify themselves that want to participate as a pilot community. That application is due on this Friday, December 10th. The application has four main components. The first is confirmation that the elected body is committed to the short and long-term commitment of the office. The second piece is confirmation and mutual agreement among partners to seek out or provide funding after the first two years of state funding finish. Third is confirmation of general agreement on the draft framework of the bill. A copy of the draft bill is, is included in the board packet. And then a fourth, fourth piece of that application is a description of current local coordination efforts. Finally, the county received an email from Doug Riggs, who works with the Central Oregon Cities Organization. And there was a, I'll just read it to you. It was an email that came in over the weekend. "The Deschutes County Cities in Cocoa, which is a Central Oregon, Central Oregon Cities Associate, or Cities Organization, are supportive of the conceptual, of the concept of a coordinated effort to address homelessness in our region. We are also interested in working with local nonprofits, Deschutes County and the City of Bend, in addressing the issue of homelessness and the impacts on our communities and the economy. We're supportive of additional legislative opportunities to resolve these issues, including the bill being suggested by Representative Krupp. And our local councils will be interested to learn, to learn more about opportunities to partner together with our colleagues in the region."
And that was from?
That was from Doug Riggs with Central Oregon Cities Organization, Cocoa.
Yeah, the cities.
Yeah.
Among them. So, that was representing the four cities.
Yep. So, really, the question for the board is, is there support to submit an application, which would be in the form of a, a letter, to LOC and AOC this Friday? And also, the City of Bend, councillor and staff are here in case there are questions for the City of Bend or about the Emergency Homeless Task Force. That concludes the staff summary.
Thank you very much. So, Commissioner Chang, yeah, you were involved with this all year?
Yeah, I, I would just like to kind of, just clarify that the Emergency Homeless Task Force, you know, one of their primary responsibilities was the production of this strategic plan. And we're not done yet. You know, there's, when, when Eric said, you know, there's a draft strategic plan, we do have, we have a vision, we got milestones, we got strategies. They're still in draft form, but I mean, those have been worked over pretty, pretty thoroughly by this incredible task force of, of people who, you know, the, the service provider experts from across the community and, and, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of horsepower from both the, the city and the county. But it is, it is just that, at this point, the action items, which, you know, to me, that's, that's the guts of the strategic plan. The action items are being drafted over the next, literally the next couple of weeks by basically, you know, work groups of the task force. And then it'll all come back together at a certain point. So, while I, I think the draft that we have is a, is a, you know, it's a very good indication of where this is going, that that strategic plan is going. And I didn't, I would not call it a, by any means, a complete document. So, just, just to kind of temper, you know, expectations about, about, about that and what you would see if you looked at that draft.
So, then, this letter, this draft letter, who's this, who, I mean, so, the content for us to discuss today, but yeah, where did this come from?
Yeah, the draft letter was put together by, by county staff. It was just to get a head start should the board want to submit an application. It's just a, a starting point for the, the letter, based on the timeframe, the short turnaround, the timeframe.
So, and you, yeah, you said for the board to submit an application, but so, it's for the board to partner with the City of Bend or all cities, I guess? I mean, you know, maybe, there's people in the room that know that information.
Uh, I mean, within the, within the Emergency Homeless Task Force, that, you know, clearly, the City of Bend has been, you know, our lead, you know, city agency in that work. But the, the City of Redmond has been represented. And my understanding is that they are interested in participating in this joint office as well.
And Cocoa was kind of representing.
Yeah.
It must have been heard by all cities already anyways, kind of my point.
Yeah. And the, the draft letter prepared by staff states that the other cities, Redmond, LePine and Sisters will be invited to participate. We didn't quite have time to go to each of those cities and get formal approval.
So, from you, Commissioner Chang, so you represented the county on this task force. So, what, I think of what are the whereas's, you know, whereas we have people dispersed camping on the federal land around the cities and in the east side of Redmond, you know, just resetting the stage. Whereas, we have 100 people or, you know, people on Huddle Road. Whereas, in the future, we're going to have less than that. Or, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the mindset of this situation. Because remember, I've been asking, when are we going to say, okay, please don't camp under the, no camping sign, you know, because that's kind of what we're dealing with here?
When we have enough, when we have enough eligible, you know, legally eligible places to, for people to go that, that we can do that.
So, then the vision is to have multiple small locations?
I, I don't think there's any set prescribed vision. Really, my, my goal is for us to make the Bethlehem Inn in Redmond happen, make the Project Turnkey and other hotel conversions happen, help Shepherd's House get their low-barrier shelter going in Redmond, have all of these other projects that provide indoor shelter space or transitional housing to people up and running, and then look for outdoor shelter options as needed to deal with the remainder of the, of the challenge. Because all of that stuff that I just described, which is my first choice, that we get all, you know, we get people into those places first, it's not enough. So, that's where, in, in my mind, where outdoor shelter fits in. And, and so I, you know, I talk about outdoor shelter options a lot because we don't have any. But it doesn't mean that that is where I, I want people to be. I want people to be in, in these other beds first. And then, it's the fact that there are too many people experiencing homelessness that makes me say, then we have to have outdoor shelter options as well. Until we can catch up on the, on the, on the beds indoors.
Commissioner Rader, do you have any?
Well, I'm looking at the poll that was, was sent to us this morning about Juniper Ridge. Should a managed homeless camp be established there? And 70, 69.6% of the people said, please, no. I know that there's a manufacturer there, Sutera, that's a flammable product. They're, they're truly worried about it. And I actually was looking at a letter from a year ago, 2020, asking that, please, City of Bend, don't put a site there. I know that the county, we have 11.38 acres east of town, three miles, that is EFU. And I've asked Jason if he can help at all in rezoning that so that we could actually help. Because there are truly people that don't want to go into a hotel room anywhere. They do not want to do that. My son told me the story about a hotel in Seattle. They told this gentleman that was living right outside this hotel, we've got an apartment for you. Oh, no, I don't want to go there. So, we definitely have people that are going to need a lot of help. And I really feel like if, if Jason can help us with getting that 11-acre-plus property rezoned so that we have one spot where at least we know, you know, when they moved everyone off of Revere, where did those people go? So, I'm hearing that they probably went down, a lot of them went down to China Hat, which is, you know, Forest Service. So, it's truly, we have, we have a tremendous need and a tremendous story here in Deschutes County with our homeless. And I just worry about the community, the ideas where, where is best. And going between two schools on a gas line, I didn't feel it, you know, I wasn't, I didn't feel that that was an idea that should be pursued. That's why I really am hoping that Jason can help with that land, you know, flip the zoning. I don't know. Put it in some bill. It is for homelessness and it is handy. And we do have, what is it, almost $10 million, which we received for buses in Deschutes County. And we, you know, had that comment with conversation with CYC, we could actually run a bus out there. As long as it wasn't just out there and back to town, it actually had a route. We could do that really easily. So, it's really, to me, that's a zoning problem. But it is 11 acres. And I know people who are here from Southern Oregon and said, gosh, if you could do something on 10 or 11 acres, like the property we have up off of 126, I think that would be helpful. You know, we've, we truly have more people coming here. You know, I'm hearing that they're put on buses from Texas, they're put on buses from Seattle. I mean, yes, we are definitely a very popular spot. And, you know, we have, our weather is, can be challenging. I'm sure it's going to be challenging at some point soon. So, I'm hoping that if we do this, that we, we have an opportunity. And I, it will be interesting to see the document. But in, the vision is in 19, in 2032, housing instability will be rare, brief, and non-reoccurring. I don't know. It seems like homelessness, houselessness in the United States of America has only gotten bigger since I started working on that in the 90s. And that's, you know, I, you know, it's like when you have someone that says, no, I don't really want to go to an apartment even though you have one. It's, it's going to be a huge ask for our, our community to help those. And sometimes they don't want to be helped. And yet, you know, we just opened up our Veterans Village. And thank goodness, we have 15 people that were homeless, eventually, that will be living there. And I, you know, it's, there are opportunities that we are working on. So.
Yeah. And, yeah, as I was just saying, we need to have this whole range of options, indoor and outdoor, high barrier, low barrier, in all sorts of locations, offering all sorts of different services to address this very substantial problem. Supporting this joint office idea, concept, is not saying you want any specific shelter or managed camp facility to be built. Supporting this concept is saying that we want a framework to all coordinate together to be able to create the facilities that we need and deliver the services that we need to, to put a dent in this problem.
So, I'm supportive of a, a letter and partnering with the City of Bend. I think the letter should say, you know, we're pleased to submit this letter for, including us in the pilot. I can't buy into the, this draft, you know, instability and homeless plan. I mean, it's a draft document. So, there's a couple paragraphs here saying, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not final. So, I mean, I'm just thinking, let's, let's leave that out a little bit.
The job, the job of, one of the things that they asked us to say in the letter was, what have we done so far? And so, the description of the strategic plan should be just that. I mean, we have done this much work on a strategic plan so far. And action planning is coming next. And since the legislation for these pilots requires a strategic plan, that gives us an opportunity to work it even more. Because one of the things I don't think we're going to get to in the Emergency Homeless Task Force's strategic plan is funding sources, long-term funding sources, which is something that is required in the strategic plan.
But there's, there's an assumption right there, long-term funding sources. So, your government is, if you're having a, if you've made some choices or your world is such that you don't have housing, your government's going to come to the solution, which is, means that we're going to expand these services. We're in that same situation again, where it just keeps going and going and going. Well, we need a high barrier, we need a low barrier, we need a campground, we need this, we need that. And we need more of it because there's more people coming. There's just a scenario there that I, I don't know that I support. We do need to make some choices and make some things happen. But how we're going to do it is probably going to be a little different. So, that's why I'm saying, yes, let's say there's a group of people worked on a vision, but, you know, after that, the milestones and the strategy may be very different. And, and I mean, how are we going to proceed with that? I've not bought into how it's worded or, you know, I mean, there's a vision that's common here. But the vision's going to be personal responsibility, liberty, and, you know, opportunity to join, join in a, an economy and, and for an American dream. Plus, we need to manage this situation. And as I say, you and I would say it differently, it sounds like. The document doesn't read the way I would want to, I mean, there needs to be some more words around what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Mm-hmm. But part of our, part of our job with the letter is describe work that has been done to date.
Yeah. So, that's fine. As I say, work's been done to date.
But I think we have to think about.
No, but we have to say what work has been done to date, not just, not just say, work has been done to date.
Well, but the work has been bought in. I mean, there's one commissioner representing at the Board of Commissioners, which is two of us aren't, haven't been involved. And now, we're seeing a draft. So, I don't know that we
My two colleagues have had every opportunity to be involved in the Emergency Homeless Task Force work.
Oh, I don't know.
Open public meetings. You've been invited to participate.
Oh, no, that's very dis, I mean, there's, that would be a quorum. So, I mean, I would never have thought to want to come participate. So, yeah, no, if you've been proceeding all your life expecting me to show up, and since I didn't show up, I'm buying into the, the solutions? No, I have not been bought.
Or to watch and give feedback later on?
Remember, we actually
And, and And, and you don't have to do that, but you, you, but if you don't do that, then you don't have the right to say like, oh, I wasn't involved, I didn't do it, you know, nobody asked me.
Oh, but there's a moment in time right now.
You had every opportunity to participate.
And if two don't support this, then you, you, we don't have buy-in.
If two don't, if two don't support this, then we, then we don't have buy-in and, and then, and then what do we do?
Okay, I just want to remind.
Oh, yeah, but you're, you're.
And then how are we going to fix the problem?
I need to.
Saying it's my job for not showing up at a meeting a few months.
I'm just saying, I, I, the only reason I said that was because you, you washed your hands of any responsibility for the work of the Homeless Task Force.
No, I don't think we washed our hands. We were waiting to hear back from you, truly. We were waiting and we have been hearing from hundreds and hundreds of people that live in the City of Bend and are so worried about their community and what's going on. Originally, we were told that twenty-five homeless camps all over the city. Oh, my gosh, I don't think the people of Bend honestly really want to live that way.
I have given you a report after every single Emergency Homeless Task Force meeting.
I'm not saying.
And if you wanted to hear more, if you wanted to engage, you had your chance.
I'm, I've been saying, I'm hearing from the people of Bend. It's one thing to hear from this small group, but to hear from the people of Bend that are really worried about the direction of their city. I think that's truly another story. And that's why, you know, I know we need to get the turnkey projects open. I definitely agree with that. But I just think, that's why I'm saying the property that the county has, I think, for those people that honestly don't want to go into, um, a hotel room somewhere, I, I believe that this would be a better bet for, for, um, a lot of our residences. So, yes, we listened.
So, as I say, uh, we'd like to be included in the coordination pilot. Uh, I would propose that we put in a paragraph or just a couple sentences, say, Deschutes County is willing to offer land outside of urban growth boundaries for camping options or, you know, whatever we want to say there, you know, how, outdoor housing options or whatever the terminology is. Uh, and then, uh, you know, acknowledging that there's multiple cities in the county and that we're all in this together. So, I mean, there, there's a way to get through this, but as I say, I'm, there's, and, I mean, as I say, I, I guess we're back to the concept that, yeah, I mean, this strategic plan, housing instability.
It requires your signature on it, Commissioner DeBonne, so, on the letter, you, you and, and I heard from Mayor Russell and she's actually, I believe, returning from, um, a personal.
This is for by Friday, this is.
Right.
So we're, we're starting the process, maybe we'll bring it back Wednesday if we're working on what we're going to do here.
And if they asked us to tell them what work we've done so far, uh, we need to tell them what work we've done so far.
For clarification, there's, I mean, there's two options. One is to attach the draft strategic plan. Another option is to say there is a draft strategic plan, but not attach it.
Well, as I say, I guess we're back in that same situation. I mean, if it's a draft and we've got efforts going on, I'd, uh, I would like to discuss this and be involved, I mean, or wordsmith it possibly a little bit, but I don't know that I'm in that spot. So that's the tricky part here. I, I, as I say, when I remember, I said, whereas is, uh, are there about five or six whereas is that we could agree upon? That, that's what I would wonder about. You know, the setting of the point in time. This is December twenty twenty-one, you know, whereas we have X amount of people here, whereas we have them there. So that's setting the problem statement. Whereas we agree that, uh, you know, we want to do something, uh, you know, whereas, as I say, I mean, I asked the city council.
I think you're on to the MOU that is part of, uh, setting up these joint offices and I don't think we're, no, anyone has asked us for an MOU right now.
Okay.
Because that's where, that's where I use whereas is, not in a letter to AOC and LOC.
So maybe I can help, uh, define why, what I'm kind of, the, there's, there's public, private, and nonprofit, kind of a three-legged stool, simple. Public, government, we're going to pave the roads, provide a cost-effective services for everybody, uh, you know, charging a fee when, when it's appropriate and when agreed upon. Public. Private is a business, uh, you know, somebody doing something, somebody owning something, somewhere to go. And nonprofit is a, an effort and an entity providing, uh, you know, services or, you know, following your heart's desire, uh, not making a profit, but it is kind of the balance of society. So this document refers to the community and services are. And, uh, you know, it just, it, it kind of mixes everything up. So I don't, I don't see it as taking a position of government providing cost-afford, uh, cost-effective, affordable land, uh, you know, places for people to be, uh, you know, public safety is part of, of the big picture here. So this is, this is kind of a jumble of all three together is, is, is one of the, so that's why I say when I wordsmith it, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, and I don't.
And this, it says, according to.
In, in, in this realm of homeless service provision, those things are all tangled together. And I'm sorry if that is.
But this is going to keep them tangled together. We as a group of people.
They, they are all tangled together because that is the way that we most effectively deliver services.
But that's, so then that's policy difference between you and I. I would much rather define, uh, a, a stable reference point, your government shall provide these services. So then public and private can, uh, you know, I mean, uh, private and nonprofit can work, uh, uh, you know, complementing instead of, well, it's one big gray bowl of stuff that we're just going to all work hard in. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to explain why, where I'm at with some of that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, i- in, in the real world, those things are all tangled together. I mean, we, you know, you want to talk about firefighting. Yeah, we got, uh, you know, we got, uh, public agencies who, who, you know, organize response. We got, you know, federal firefighters. We also have contractors. We also have private planes for hire. Affordable housing, you have.
But, but, hold on.
You have businesses.
Firefighting, it's all paid for by the public, though, so it's really not. I mean, I'll, I'll be a contractor if you're going to pay me enough to go buy a truck and go fight fires, but I, the people are paying it through government. Government's the only entity paying for that service.
I, I mean, I think if you, if you look at it, the, the reality is that government is the, government is, government is who's paying, yeah, government who's, who's paying for most of this stuff. And the fuel reduction in your backyard, like all that project firework, I mean, that's mostly federally funded too.
Oh, no, I'm referring to on my private property.
Okay, that sweat equity you put in, that's your, that's your investment.
No, I'm referring to my private property. The branches I cleaned up and burned are done. Nobody paid me for that, it's done.
That's right, that's your sweat equity, that's what you put in.
Sweat equity as defined by the government? I don't know what you mean.
No, sweat equity as defined by, you sweated, that's your equity. That's what you, that was your investment.
Yeah.
Okay?
Investment.
Right?
See, but that's, that's drawing, that's, that's stepping into my world already just by what you said there.
And, and the fact that you, that you made private individual citizen investment and the fact that there is a federally or state-funded firefighter or locally-funded firefighter who is there to then, uh, protect your home and able to do that better because of the defensible space that you've done? That is what makes fire protection work, the combination.
Oh, and I was just pointing out that you were referring to private companies, those are all paid by, yeah.
Yeah, okay, affordable housing. Affordable housing, there are, you got, you got federal money available, you got private capital available, you got, uh, housing works type developers who do this work, you got nonprofits who do this work, you have for-profit businesses who, who build affordable housing, all of them. And, I mean, you know, is it, is it a bad thing that we have all of those nonprofit, government, private sector actors, all trying to work on the same problem in different ways? I think it's a strength. I think it's a strength.
What's the definition of the problem?
The definition of the problem is there's not enough homes that are affordable to people who are making local wages.
So why don't we just give land away to people?
Because if you just give land away to people, then people build nine hundred thousand dollar homes because that's the most profitable thing to do.
I'm referring to homesteading. Why don't we just give away forty acres to anybody that wants it somewhere in the country?
Because we did that at an earlier point in U.S. history. This is not the time to be giving away forty acres to anyone who wants it.
Well, yeah, I'm saying, but that's a box we put.
Mostly just, mostly because all of the good stuff has been taken already.
Well, with new, if we're going to go to Mars someday, that's not prime land, the Mar, this, the surface of the moon. So maybe we should just give away forty acres in the middle of nowhere.
I'm not too worried about, uh, the, I'm not too worried about when I have a chance to homestead on Mars.
Okay, well, I'm just pointing out that, I mean, we, we have the land use that blocks us in. That's the only reason you would say we need to build more affordable housing and have federal states incentives and nonprofits do.
No, what I keep, what I keep saying, what I keep saying, which you, I, I know you don't, don't agree with it, but what I'll keep saying is that providing land supply alone does not get you affordable housing.
But that's in the reference to the way you're envisioning it. You're envisioning that UGB, old UGB expansion with water, sewer, and roads. And I'm referring to, we, that's still a box we put in ourselves because we could be giving away forty acres, uh, you know, to any Tom, Dick, and Harry that wants it, homesteading. I mean, there's thousands and thousands of square miles that we just stop.
There's, there's, there's no room for, you know, when, when the federal, okay, I, I can't believe.
Yeah, so no, I'm just pointing out that we put a box around it.
Let me just be, let's just be clear, when the federal government made homesteading opportunities available to people, people took the best stuff, right? The stuff where, you know, you had access to water, where you had access to arable soils. The stuff that's left, you don't develop that without, without the kinds of infrastructure that the government needs to provide. How are you going to get broadband out there? How are you going to get electricity out there? How are you going to get roads out there? I could give you, I could give you forty acres in the middle of nowhere, are you going to build your road twenty miles to get into town? No.
Well, see, that's still a definition. I mean, a couple solar panels and a Starlink satellite and I've got, uh, quite, quite a bit of what I need.
And you got no road to get anywhere.
But I don't.
But you don't need a road to get anywhere? I'd like to see that.
I mean, that's a definition that, that we're holding on to, though, is. You ride a horse in. What do you need a road for?
Okay.
So I'm just saying, there's, there's different views of the world.
You can ride your, you can ride your horse. I, I agree that there's different views of the world. And that's why we need to make this letter, this MOU, and this effort, this letter, this MOU, and this effort focus on the policy opportunity at hand and not spin out into the specific axes that we have to grind.
Oh, I'm just pointing out, there's different views.
Let me, let me tell you, let me tell you what my vision is, okay? That, that what this, what this is about, okay? We have service providers in this community, including ourselves, you know, through our behavioral event, health division, we're a service provider. We have people who are willing to create facilities. Uh, we need to scale those things up and we have gaps. There are certain kinds of facilities and certain kinds of services that are not being provided at the scale we need them or, uh, just completely absent. This joint office can help us coordinate, plan together, make investments, fill the gaps. That's what this is about. And I don't want to talk about specific facilities in specific places right now because that is not supposed to be in this letter, nor is, I, nor is it, uh, the, the thing that the, the joint office immediately jumps to. We're talking about governance and planning and coordination so that we can eventually get to where do these facilities need to be, what do they need to look like?
Well, but then.
And how do we create them?
Whereas we'd like to design a society where we don't need homeless shelters because nobody's unhoused. I'm just saying, there's, there's a bigger picture there, too.
Well, that's twenty thirty-two.
Yeah, there you go. Well, so, as I say, I mean, I'm supportive, but I don't want to be told what my thoughts are on this, that's why I'm debating.
I don't want to be told what my thoughts are on, and your whereas is that you were putting out, we're getting way more specific than we need to be in this letter.
I think you and Sally should, um, hopefully maybe get together, if you can, tomorrow.
Yeah, so, I mean, as I say, I'm not opposed to having this discussion. This is exciting, great opportunity. Uh, there's, uh, other cities and counties around Oregon that are diving onto this right away. I spoke to, uh, Commissioner from Umatilla County and they have land already. They just happen to have parcel, uh, be, yeah, so I won't mention the specifics, but yeah, they have land. So that's the one thing we don't have. It's out, we don't have land outside of a city. We don't have good access to land inside the cities at this point, so there's, uh, when it comes down to it, you know, what, what can we do when we, when we want to put that place for people? You know, if you don't have anywhere to go, let's put, let's put you somewhere and get you started, get you stabilized, get you services. So, as I said, there's lots of great common ground here. I mean, um, we're, we're having a vibrant discussion today, but let's figure out where's a place for people, uh, not haphazard out there, uh, that we can really ground ourselves and use as a reference point to move forwards. So, yeah, maybe we just bring this back Wednesday and then move, you know, figure out, because I could come up with, uh, content for a letter too, or a little bit more, yeah, Sally and I, I guess, just like you're saying.
Okay, I mean, any requests from staff in preparation for Wednesday?
Well, uh, I would like to include the concept of Deschutes County's asking for the opportunity for either supersiting or one-time or, uh, you know, opportunity for a location. So remember, the scenario is KOA is the one place where like, well, let's just open that campground that used to be open twenty years ago and we can't seem to get there. But that used to be a skip and a jump outside of Bend. I mean, it used to be that place far out by Cooley Road, which was out, uh, and it hasn't been for a long time, but maybe we need that other place somewhere. You know, I, I'm kind of envisioning between Bend and Redmond, but then you're referring to parcel outside.
There's a parcel east of, of Bend, which I've driven out to and, because it is, I mean, there has to be standards, it has to be kept clean, uh, you know.
But I mean, that's.
It's got, it is right next to the property.
The place.
But see, there's no shopping center out there. What happens is you saw what happened to Standard Appliance, who were featured on the news the other day, their trucks are being broken into repetitively, repetitively. And, you know, there's motels there that are be, being, being broken into, you know, the fact that Huddle Road's gone from thirty-five last January to eighty-five Memorial Day to a hundred and eleven now. Um, yeah, it's, it's really, that, that neighborhood is truly, um, and who's going to want to buy that land with what's going on there? And I think it's too valuable, honestly.
So if we want to, uh, if we want to talk about some specific site and, and, um, releasing or relinqu, or relaxing of land use, uh, regulations, I, I would request that we put that at the very end of the, of the letter and emphasize that this is beyond the scope of our requests to be considered as a pilot for the joint office because it is, in my mind, unrelated. And if we want to talk to the legislature about an additional thing, uh, while we're talking to them about the joint office, that's great, but, uh, it, it belongs at the end of the letter, if at all, in the letter.
I wasn't asking for it to be put in the letter, I just think that, um, clearly listening to the hundreds of people, and I know when we had our joint meeting with the, uh, city council, they said they'd heard from thousands of people, so, um, yes, I just think it needs to be mentioned. And maybe Jason will know where it can go. It's not in within this letter.
We don't, do we need a place for people?
Mm-hmm.
And Deschutes County shouldn't ask for authority to find a place. I'm referring to, I'm envisioning a campground.
It is not, it is not part of this joint office concept. It, that is not getting to this level of specificity. This is about governance, coordination, plant, planning, trying to figure out where investment is going to come from. You are talking about a specific project. And we can explore specific projects, but it is not, uh, it is unrelated to the, uh, it is unrelated to, uh, the, the, the key things that this bill is dealing with. You're, you're jumping to Z, fine scale, and this, this bill is dealing with like ABC, broad scale. So again, if you wanted to, if you want to discuss that in there, I just asked that it goes at the end and we, and we emphasize that we say, that we know that this is not what, what they're talking about with the joint office legislation.
So we have a co.
This is a special additional request.
We have a challenging situation.
This is a special additional request. While we got your attention, we also want to float this idea. That's fine, if, you know, that, that gives you the opportunity to talk to them.
So.
And you have, and you have.
Are we working towards Martin versus Boise?
Yeah.
And so, as I say, this is a work. And so, as I say, this is a work session. I wish we could do this more often, and it's a public meeting, fully recorded, videoed, and this is, I mean, now I'm wondering, are we working toward Martin versus Boise?
It's every right to hear what we think about this.
Are we working towards Martin versus Boise?
Yes.
With the legislative ask and.
Yes, and like I said, like I said, you know, like all of those projects that I mentioned, you know, low barrier shelter at Shepherd's House, high barrier shelter, well, you know, Project Turnkey projects, Veterans Village, the St. Paul's project in Bend, all of these projects. We want it all to move forward. We want it all to scale up, and when we get to a certain point.
So when is that demarcation of when Martin versus Boise would be legally?
I am not, I am not the legal scholar to tell you that.
Three to five years?
All I know, all I know is that we are not there now. We do not have the number of places now. And the only way that we get there is by doing something.
Well, and I want to do something, and I want to get there. So if we start a joint office of homeless management, and we have a plan and a vision, and it's going to take three to five years to kind of run through this, we're going to have to buy any of them, we're going to be multiple years out before we even get back to the concept of, I wonder if we could get past Martin versus Boise? Where, I mean, I don't think it should take that long, is my point. That's why the land ask. You're saying land ask is not associated? I think it's fully associated.
I think it's something you can work on right away, as soon as you want, but it is not the guts of what this bill deals with.
I, okay, well, it's good we're talking about it because that's exactly what this is.
Every time I talk to, every time I talk to a legislator, I am talking about the memo that we had done that explores, you know, the barriers to getting more mobile home parks, RVs, and campgrounds. I'm talking to them about HB 2006, you know, emergency setting, and how that only applies inside, you know, pretty much only inside city limits or, you know, with certain specific rural residential properties. So I am interested in opportunities that are currently not available to us because of land use regulations. And I am working on that stuff. It is not the appropriate place to focus on that in a letter that is asking about being a pilot for this bill.
So Councilor Brodmann has joined us, and he's itching to say something. So as I say, this isn't a public hearing, but please join us. I'm happy to. And I was hoping that you'd come back, so.
Well, I.
So thank you, as I say, this is a work session on the topic.
Be on to the next subject.
This is a work session on the topic, and we're just, yeah.
Good to see everybody. I'll be as brief as you will allow me. I just wanted to talk about the letter that's before you, which this policy discussion is amazing, the energy, I think, in this community that come up with joint solutions is really important. We see that as totally appropriate for the intergovernmental agreement that this legislation contemplates. So the letter before you today is as simple as raising your hand, not saying, you know, you have all of the policy solutions to fix this. Say, all we want to say to the state right now is we're ready to work together. And so the last line item in this letter, as required by the expression of interest, all it requires, I think, is something as simple as we have formed a joint task force, we want to continue to work together. And other than that, I don't think that this, and I would defer to, obviously.
We'll get there.
You're going to sign your letter. But all this letter has to say is, we have a joint task force, we want to work together. And so I really appreciate, I really appreciate the commissioner's support for this. I think it's exactly the right move to be more efficient with our governmental resources in this community, work together, and try to come up with a solution. This IGA, the intergovernmental agreement that the legislation contemplates, is the perfect place for the kind of policy discussions that we see at this dais and we see at our table at city council. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. And as I say, I mean, it's good that this content's going back and forth. This gives us something to talk about, you know. If we're talking about an IGA, this is probably some of the content, right?
And I think that there will be a lot going into that IGA to make sure that it reflects, you know, we're going to have to have shared values and a shared approach of moving this ball.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. So Molly Wells-Darling was possibly itching to say something also, and this is our staff from Health, and we had funded a.
I thought you were going to say staff from health.
Health!
Health. Okay. I just thought maybe we should lighten.
It's a conversation. Yeah, there we go.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Thank you, commissioners. Actually, the councillor just, and I highlighted what I was going to say, is that really the purpose of this request is around this letter of interest for this bill in order for us to be able to develop this joint office. And the joint office really will work on all the things that you all just discussed today, which are really important items for us to work on. But that's really the intent right now, is just to say we are interested in being a pilot project. And then that joint office, if we were to become a pilot, would be able to work on all of the ins and outs of everything that you've discussed.
Great, thank you. Well, so as I say, so the reality of a Martin versus Boise federal decision saying we can't, we're not allowed legally to ask somebody to leave a location, which is what's happening at Huddle.
Yeah, ODOT did. Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, well, but as I say, I mean, if we're thinking that that's just one of those backburner items out in the future, that means that there's no action going to be taken in the near future or even on the horizon for some of those activities, which a lot of community members are not ready to hear that at this time. So I mean, that's something we need to be acknowledging.
I want to make perfectly clear again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be working on specific facilities. I'm just saying that it is not part of this letter.
I think it's the driver for this whole thing. The only reason we're in this spot is because there's a legal case.
We were asked to put four bullets of content in this letter. Nowhere in these four bullets does it say, tell us the specific site you're going to use for a managed camp-type facility.
Well, I'm of the mind that a.
And we can work on, we can work on those projects all you want. Like I said, I'm working on it, too. Right? I just don't think that it needs to go in this letter. And if you want to put it in the letter.
Exactly in this letter.
If you want to put it in the letter, I'm requesting that you put it at the end. After the content that has been asked for.
We needed to have this conversation. I remember hearing, you know, I already mentioned this once, the 25 camps all over Bend, and I'm thinking like, I've been hearing from the people at Bend, and this is not something that they envision moving in their neighborhoods. And yet, I know there are things we need to do for the homeless, and clearly, you know, funding the 88 rooms for the Bethlehem Inn in Redmond, I thought was a really big priority because it was effective. It was 88 rooms, and we need to get that open. So I'm happy about that. But 25 little homeless camps throughout the city, no. I mean, I think that using county land for a bigger project might be a better way to go, and that's why I thought it was important that we mentioned it today. So, anyway, I don't, I think we need to get on from this, guys.
Yeah, this is, as I say, Monday for a, Wednesday for the end of the week, so let's.
Yeah, we've got to have the letter.
I will communicate with the mayor on this, and we'll come up with, I mean, so the answer is yes, and the debate's out here, so that's where we're at.
There's no debate. I'm just saying that when you bring it back, you know, you can go away and work on a letter on your own if you want. It just, when you bring it back on Wednesday, it has to, it has to address the requested content.
So this is a legislative concept by one representative here in central Oregon. It has statewide significance. The staff at AOC have put in these bullet points to give it a little bit of structure. We're just responding to a legislative concept. You're acting like it's already in cement and in stone. These are just ideas going back and forth. I mean, you're trying to tell me that this is what we have to do because it's on this piece of paper? It's just legislative concepts.
They want to know that people are.
And that's our staff at AOC.
They want to know that people are ready to undertake a pilot like this so that they can prioritize who among all the counties that have expressed interest.
I think we should have a paragraph that says, we have a vibrant two-to-one discussion on all kinds of topics here. I mean, whatever. I mean, I'm just saying, this is, it's just a vibrant discussion on this topic, but it's not locked in stone. These are just legislative ideas. So we'll have something back on Wednesday. Thank you. Okay. So we've gotten through CPAs today. Now we're talking homeless issues. Item number six, briefing of a grant for Tumalo Community Update and the Rural Trails by Sisters. Yeah. Do we want to just take a five-minute break? It's going to be kind of.
Nope.
Okay, let's power through.
Good afternoon, Board. Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner for Deschutes County. What you have before you is just a brief update on where we are with the $75,000 grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation and Department of Land Conservation and Development's Transportation Growth Management Program. Essentially, we applied for this back, we submitted in July 30th of 20. We got the award letter. And September 24th of 20, the board officially accepted it in October 14th of 20, and we've been working on a scope of work since then. The scope of work regards amending our comprehensive plan for two elements, if you will. The first is the Tumalo Community Plan, where, you know, staff is going to update the entire plan. This grant is just for the transportation element. So we're looking at bike, pad, transit options, you know, some road crossings, things of that nature. But there'll be a larger portion of the Tumalo Community Plan that Grant doesn't fund, which will deal with land use, prospective sewer, other utilities, things of that nature. But the grant's just for the transportation element. The second part of the grant is for rural trails in the Sisters country. So what that means is, Deschutes County, the Forest Service, the City of Sisters, did a Sisters country plan where the boundary of the plan was the Sisters School District attendance boundary. Of that, they came up with various strategies and implementation tactics, and so what we're responsible for is the rural trails portion for the Sisters Country Vision Action Implementation Plan. So essentially, what that means in English is rural trails outside the City of Sisters city limits. I've talked with the US Forest Service last week, and they've actually done a lot of this preliminary work already. So we'll be able to piggyback on that and fold it into our comp plan. And also what the grant will do at the end is that we will make amendments to the transportation system plan, both on maps for the rural trails as well as for the Tumalo Community Plan. Then we'll go through an adoption process, public hearings for the Board of, excuse me, for the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. As part of developing the grant, we'll also have public meetings, both online. I don't think we're going to have them physically because of the pandemic still, but we've had open houses online with the TSP, and that's worked fairly well. And then basically a lot of outreach that way. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The status of it right now, it's over the hill. The TGM Central Headquarters is being reviewed. So what we're hoping, fingers and toes crossed, is that we'll get a notice to proceed by January of 2022 so we can get going on it. We're doing some preliminary work in-house, so that way we're not just, you know, twiddling our thumbs, waiting to get the notice to proceed. So we're working with our GIS people to update some census data for the Tumalo Community Plan and other aspects such as that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm getting in the mood, the mode here. Tumalo Community Plan update, bicycle pedestrian transit, could be amendments to the TSP section on this. We know that, you know, there's, we're talking about an underpass, possibly a pedestrian underpass in Tumalo area. Roundabouts are going to be put in. What kind of things physically are the options here, I guess? You know, what's the scope of the options for when we talk about bicycle pedestrian transit?
So that'll be part of, you know, the open house. Cascades East has a master plan for what they want to do, so part of the open house and working with our stakeholders is, do they put transit stops in Tumalo? And if so, where might be locations? Do we need to look at our parking standards for Tumalo? What do we need to do to extend the sidewalk system in Tumalo? What do we do for the bike undercrossing? Right now, ODOT tentatively wants to put an undercrossing at US 20 near Fourth Street. Currently, we don't have anything going beyond that to get down to Strickler, but things of that nature. So how do you get across Highway 20? Also, how do you circulate within Tumalo ways that aren't necessarily by a private automobile? So that's kind of what the Tumalo Community Plan is. The Sisters Rural Trail is bike, pad, and also some equestrian aspects of where those trails can be. For the Sisters Rural Trails, you know, we will have to put the caveat in our TSP, that's on federal land, so there's a whole federal process if they want to build these. It's just kind of a 30,000-foot level of where these potentially could go, pending further environmental review by the Forest Service. The advantage of doing it is that if there are third parties, like the Sisters Trail Alliance or other groups that want to apply for grants to build these, typically, one of the first questions in a grant is, is this on an adopted transportation system plan or a refinement plan? And so they'll be able to say yes.
Yeah, now that helps just thinking about, you know, some of the topics you mentioned, the fact that, you know, just, what would a pedestrian plan look like if you were going to try to go from east to west, north to south, or from residential to commercial, or, you know. So once you start looking at it, those different layers, then you're like, oh, yeah, we should have another sidewalk somewhere, you know.
Correct. Where do you need sidewalk infill? Where, you know, exactly. That's the thing. You need bike lanes. If so, where are they? Exactly.
Well, that's good, yeah, for the community members that want to get engaged in this. That's good to understand those are the types of discussions that are available. So then the Sisters Country Trail System, that's, yeah, being able to ride your bike for recreation more than.
What about ride your horse?
Um, we're looking at.
Sorry, yeah. I wasn't trying to, but for recreational purposes, I guess.
Well, one of the, and I was, I was going to ask, like, whether we'll run into any of the controversy associated with this, but there was, you know, one of the big, big ideas, proposals that came out of the Sisters Trail Alliance Community Planning some years ago was a trail that runs from Blackbeak Ranch to Sisters, which conceivably, a whole lot of kids who live in crossroads or Tollgate subdivisions could use to get to school. But there was, you know, it may have only been like a couple, but there are extremely, extremely vocal and and impactful community members who were opposed to the construction of that trail, and it died. You know, after a whole bunch of planning had been done, after the Sisters Trail Alliance had, you know, already amassed all the resources that they were going to need to implement the project. So I guess I, like I was, you know, the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, if we assist with this planning process, are we going to get, like, you know, I can only imagine that that concept is going to come back. And, you know, would be, would, you know, people would want to discuss it, and if so, like, does this planning process get to the level where kind of that kind of active resistance would manifest itself? Or is it kind of still at the abstract planning level and people don't perceive it as an imminent threat?
Well, no more when we do the online open houses, but I have talked to the Recreation Trail Planners for the Sisters Ranger District, and they have met with, I think, Crosswater and Toll, I always want to say Toll House, Tollgate.
Tollgate.
And, you know, Equestrian. And so they basically have a consensus on some trail proposals up there. And my thought, us and working with our consultant, rather than reinvent the wheel, if you've got a trail plan that seems to make everybody supportive, let's not reopen Pandora's Box, and let's just go ahead and go with that. If you want to add to it, that's fine. But certainly, if there are those who aren't fans of that whole crossroads and Tollgate proposal, they can make it down in a public setting, so just work our way through that.
Great. So this is just kind of an update. These are projects ready to roll out there and have their own timeframes.
Yeah, it'll be about a 12- to 18-month planning process once we get the notice to proceed. And again, it'll come before you. Occasional work sessions where I'll update the board, and then eventually, you know, you'll have your official capacity after the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and we'll bring maps and amendments and text and all those good things before you in formal public hearings.
Any other questions?
I guess one question. So Peter, there's going to be that bike pad underpass constructed in Tumalo, and so doing this kind of plan. And so doing this kind of planning now, you know, or at this moment, I mean, we will, we will be, you know, even if this, this planning work happens before that gets constructed, the planning will kind of integrate that into, you know, thinking that plus the, the new roundabout that's going to be built at Cook in, in 20. Like it, it, transportation planning will be looking towards what the infrastructure will look like in the future, not kind of snapshot in time right now.
Right, so it's like all of our long range planning you do at 20 year horizon. So if ODOT has programmed that underpass, we can include it in the planning as a given. It may not physically be there, but it's already programmed or it's got land use approval for it, you can count on it as if it's there because it's planned and programmed.
Great, thank you.
I, I did want to mention that it is up the hill from the roundabout because it would be, it was the cheapest place to put it under the highway and still have, have it, you know, as truly a safer access for young kids.
Yep, cost was one and also it was closer to the school.
Right.
So the little school, basically if you've ever been out there, their parents come on the south side of the, you know, the large open field to pick up a lot of them. And so there's, well, there's a lot of pickup at the front of the school on the north side. There's a lot of informal, I won't say it looks like the Oklahoma land rush at three o'clock, but it's.
It does.
Close. So this way they can get back and forth more, particularly as you've had some residential development on the other side of US 20. So that's one, that's another benefit besides the grade and the sp, expanses also proximity to the school.
Good stuff. Okay.
Thank you for that bit of history.
Thank you very much. So that's it for agenda items. It is 3:30. There is a proposed possible executive session.
Yes, Dave?
We'd like to consider that. It would be litigation, probably need five minutes.
Oh, good, yeah. So let's, I think I'm available for that. How about yourself?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
It's 192-6602H.
So 2H, this will be.